For that and David will talk a little bit more about that as well. The other thing I would like to mention is that we are going to, we do plan to take an aggressive look at the other possible, at other possible plan options that might be out there in the marketplace early next year, start a little bit earlier, be a little bit more aggressive and to take a look to see what other kind of plan options might be available to us. So with that, I'm going to bring up Mr. David Johnson. Come on up.
Thank you, Lori. Excuse me, I apologize, I'm not fighting Nicole, I am at war with it right now, so my voice is a little shaky, I apologize. I thought I would just talk a little bit about both of the plans. First of all, on Delhi, maybe remember last year, we made some minor changes to the plan, changed so that employees had a bigger discount providers, excuse me, a bigger network of providers to go to, a bigger discount. Claims increased slightly, but network discounts did too, so that just means they're able to use providers that are giving them a better discount, giving them a better discount than any out-of-pocket expenses they might have. Excuse me, we also changed the administrative fee last year, so we're in the middle of a two-year rate guarantee. So, the dental plan is rolling along fine, we're going to have the same rates for this coming year, so everything should be fine there. The medical plan is a little bit of a different manner. You have seen, I think, in some of your communications, that claims have increased quite a bit over the last year, like the number's 27 percent. Probably the question you ask is, why have they gone up so much? And the response is, I was actually telling Lori this before the meeting, it sounds like a cop-out, but you have done so well for so many years, that this is a pretty standard increase. Your overall cost on the plan, your maximum obligation to Anthem is going to increase by 10 percent. If you don't incur the claims, because the plan is self-funded, so you're essentially paying the claims, Anthem is writing the checks on your money. If you don't incur those claims, you keep that money. And that's what's happened for the last several years. Three years ago, you had a one and a half percent increase, I believe. Last year, you actually had a decrease in overall obligation. All along, John has set rates at more expected claims, because your maximum is actually much higher than what expected claims are. So right now, as of through, excuse me, through September, your claims actually for the first nine months of the year are right where the insurance company expected them to be. They just happen to be higher than they have been for the last couple of years. You haven't changed plan designs for, I couldn't remember the last time actually you made a plan design change in terms of benefits on the plans. You've got a, about a 10 percent increase for the upcoming year. Again, the self-funded plan allows you to take advantage of any kind of lower claims experience that you expect to have. So, your large claims increase that this year, that was one of the things that did increase. So, those big-ticket items did increase quite a bit from last year. You're also looking at some of your claims experience, your inpatient expenses actually decreased a little bit, even with those large claims, but your outpatient services actually increased a lot. And that means there are just a lot of visits that people are having and incurring expense there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail, if you feel like I need to.
Do I have any questions? It's a nature of business in the insurance business, especially with self-funded plans, you go along and, I know we were talking with Mayor Jack, they had a big increase like this about three years ago, and have been level the last couple of years. But you know, sometime it's going to come back and bite you if you, if you go along and...
That it will.
It's just the nature of the business.
We are, as Lori mentioned, we are going to review the market next year. So that will involve looking at other vendors, in terms of the providers that you would have available, look at other vendors in terms of the internal stop-loss insurance that you have, so you're protected over $150,000 on large claims, so we'll look at different vendors for the cost of that, different administrators. You have a unique plan today, in that for both of the plans that you have, you have a traditional PPO plan, and you have a qualified out-of-need health care plan. Both of those plans, an employee has a choice of which network of providers they want to use. So they can select a narrow network, and that is less expensive, it excludes several providers in the Cape, but that plan is less expensive, and for that, actually, the city gives them, well, extra cash, so, and the rates are slightly lower. So, when we review those things, that will be what we'll look at, where people are incurring claims, to make sure either A, they have the same providers, or B, articulate how that's going to impact them if you decide to make that kind of a change. But we'll be doing that in 2020.
How much...
Yeah, 2025.
How much of that 27 percent increase is attributed to large claims?
Probably about half of it. You actually...
Those are probably large, one-time acute claims, not ongoing.
Certainly what you hope for, but probably half of yours are ongoing, so there will be some expense next year for those particular claims. So for the rate, so the insurance company uses a rating period, so 12 months, and that rating period was August 1st of 18 through the end of July of 19. There were 14 claims over $25,000 in that timeframe, four of those were over 50, and one of them was over $100,000, so the largest claim was 191. That sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but there are a lot bigger claims out there that we deal with. So, you're fortunate in that sense that it's not a 250, 300,000 dollar claim, or something like that. Paid claims after stop-loss, after we remove, after the insurance company removes the amount over the stop-loss, are right at, or they were 2.4 million. And then last year, a year ago, the insurance company said, as of this timeframe, that's where you expect claims to be. But last year's claims were so much lower, that it looks like a dramatic increase.
Thank you. Question that Lori, and then, overall, are city employees happy with the plan that they have? Do you get that feeling?
I feel they are. As David mentioned, we haven't made really any plan changes with deductibles, co-pays, and things like that, for probably a little over 10 years. So...
It's been?
Yeah, it has, it's been, that's a, an accomplishment in the insurance world, I think, not to have to looked at some of those things sooner. And when you look at over a 10 to 12-year period, you know, it's like the stock market, it's a little different picture than when you just try to look at one year, and what's, what the results have been. But overall, for the most part, I, I think the deductible, sometimes we do get people that come back and say the deductibles are a little high.
What are they?
The city made those changes back when it were probably, it was, it was, I guess, a newer thing to raise them up that high, and it was painful then, to raise them to what they are now, but they haven't changed.
And they're probably a little over 10 years.
Well, I'll tell you what, did you ask what they were?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have two plans, you really have four choices. So you have a traditional PPO plan, and you choose which network you want to use. If you choose to use the narrow network on the PPO plan, employee gets $32 per month extra in their paycheck for selecting that plan for the PPO plan. So the city pays the full premium for the single, and then they give back 32 bucks. If you're in the HSA plan, they get banned the narrow network, you get $29 back in cash. Now, that's in addition to, actually, on the HSA plan, you're giving $50 a month to the employee to put in their HSA. That's their money immediately. So the first, you give it to them in the first month, that's their money, and it's in their HSA plan. They can spend it however they want, if they don't spend it the right way, they get taxed on it, or penalty taxed, but that goes in there, so they get 600, is that right, 50 times 12, 600 bucks a year. The PPO plan is a $2,500 individual deductible. But the PPO plan, if you go to see a primary care physician, it's a $30 copay. If you go see a specialist, it's $60. So, if you don't do anything all year long, and you get to November, and you get a cold, and you should be going to see the doctor for primary care, you're going to pay $30, even though you haven't spent any other money. So that's first dollar coverage. And the HSA plan, or the qualified out-of-deductible plan, is a $2,000 deductible. So, that, everything goes toward the deductible, except for benefit care. So if you go into the doctor, just again, for that sinus infection, or whatever, you're going to have to pay the whole cost of that benefit, but you're getting that $50 a month to help pay for those costs.
I'd say $2,500 deductible is low, and today's market is...
Yeah.
I mean, it really is.
It is.
Especially 100 percent employer-funded.
That is nice about the plan, more reduction for selecting the narrow network.
Thank you. No, I disagree with you, but insurance now is a difference a lot of times in keeping quality employees. I see it, I know you see it, so, kudos. I know it's tough to make a 27 percent increase, but we've been very fortunate over the last few years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And you said you will be looking at, and back in the marketplace?
Yeah.
And more.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, we really appreciate being able to work with the city, we really thank you for being on our plans.
Thank you very much.
Will Ann, we're going to do communication reports, counselor?
Yes. It's spaghetti day.
Make sure you turn your mic on.
I got this one.
Turn the mic on.
It's spaghetti day, my third day. Yes, big deal, big deal. The Park and Rec Foundation, which annual, what year is spaghetti?
Oh.
Oh.
Like, Danny, like 10 or 12.
It's a, you've got a dabo sign, so we'll put it there. Thursday, 11 till 7, at the arena building. Dine-in, carry-out, or delivery. So, he does it right.
The delivery is big.
The delivery is big, and I know the Parks folks are scrambling around town like crazy to provide this wonderful benefit, and wonderful spaghetti. So, eight bucks for adults, five for kids, it's the deal of the week, so, everybody have spaghetti on Thursday.
Free.
It's a great fundraiser, too, for a great cause.
Everybody else?
Yeah, I do. So, I'm sure you're going to talk about the NAACP, bringing... Well, I mean, I, you know, I, that was a, had the opportunity to go to dinner with Nate and Mayor Shelley, and it's the first time I had been to it, and I really enjoyed it, and I won a tea kettle in the salon, so, yeah, but it was a great, the speaker was amazing, the musician was...
Stiller.
Awesome. Where was he from? Came from?
Baltimore.
Yeah, Baltimore. It was amazing. And then last week, I had the opportunity to go to an event, and I know Chief Blair was there, and Assistant Chief Barnes, the Behavioral Health and Economics Network of the National Council for Behavioral Health, had an event showcasing the efforts locally of the crisis intervention teams. We had state legislators in the room, staff from Senator Blunt's office, as well as Congressman Smith, sheriff, and as I said, chief, and Assistant Chief Barnes, and a lot of the behavioral health providers, just really kind of talking about all of the efforts now to help out law enforcement, and to work together with law enforcement to respond appropriately to calls. I mean, I think for so long, and Chief can probably speak better to this than I can, you know, I think I heard from a number of officers that were on the panel, that, you know, historically, they had gone to a call and, and, you know, responded, and maybe, or, you know, put them in handcuffs, put them in the car, and took them, and didn't really know what to do with the person who was in mental health crisis. And now that we have programs and staff available, we can divert them to the correct place. Chief, if you want to say anything.
I actually never miss an opportunity to say anything. Yeah, one of the things that I'm going to brag on our department a little bit, a few years ago, we took a place to try to get all of our officers with the crisis intervention training, and 95 percent of our patrol officers are crisis intervention specialists, for lack of a better word. 75 percent of our department across the board has gone through this training, and we can see a difference in how our interactions go, and how we're able to get people better services, and get them to services quicker, because we can recognize, by no means are we psychologists or counselors now, but we at least have some of the tools in our toolkit to recognize that. And one of the things that really impressed me was there was a lady down from the National Foundation from DC, and she mentioned that Missouri's crisis intervention program is the go-to, that she tells other states to look at, when they're wanting to put something to the test. And so, I think that's something that Missourians, you know, can all be proud of. And I actually just said, "Missourians, and we..." It's awesome.
We have a very active, we have a very active crisis intervention team council here in the southeast area. You know, we're lucky enough to have a state coordinator, Detective Klaus from Perryville, who coordinates CIT efforts across the state, and he's a great resource, and, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a great event.
I'm going to call Texas and let them know that you're...
I guess I am fully assimilated now.
Mayor, Stacy and I got to meet with Ryan, and Alex, and Molly on Thursday, and go through the comprehensive plan overview, and that will be presented, I think in November?
We'll take it to planning and zoning, probably late this year, early next year, and once PNC adopts it, it will come forward to the council with a presentation.
Oh, wow. But that is something that I, what I would, and Molly will fill in where I butcher this, but a strategic plan for what the city is going to do, how we're going to do it with infrastructure, and land use, and those pieces. Ryan Tremblin, I started on that in 2016, I believe, so he's been working on that for three years, four years now. Phenomenal document, and much more user-friendly to staff than the previous one, so anxious for us all to look at that. Molly, would you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what Councilman Gard said, that the comprehensive plan is really the city's blueprint for the future, for the next 20 years or so, and it really does outline all of the things that Molly mentioned, including our land use philosophy moving forward. It will be the foundational document for the city councils as you set policy in the years. And so, we're really excited to get it adopted, and present it to the city council, and then start on those implementation measures. We have made a real concerted effort to make it a living document, so that it is a very useful tool, that staff can refer to regularly when they present rezoning cases and land use issues to the city council, but also that you can refer to as you set policy for the city's course moving forward. So, very excited to share that with you in the coming months.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Anybody else? Good. I too want to reiterate what you said about the NAACP event, that it was a, it was a really neat event, and music for that stadium, our wife loves it, she runs into a lot of her old students, right Scott?
Yeah.
So, it's a neat event. We had the Citizens Academy graduation this last week, and that was kind of a neat event. We had, I thought, some great interaction between the people that were there, and tried to take just a little time at the end, to have a little question and answers about any topic, and it was, it was a really neat event. It's progressing, and I think because of that, we're going to have many, many more educated people out there in the community about how the city does business, and what they do every day, and it's, it's big. I thank all the departments for their, their help with this, and I recognize Nicolette, she's done a great job putting this together with help, it's, she does a great job. I mentioned last time, I, my Mississippi River tour with the Missouri Department of Conservation was canceled, but I did get to go last Friday morning, and for about three hours, we were out there with, there were about five of us, I guess, with the conservation department. It was a great trip, we went north, all the way up toward Devil's Island, and then all the way south, on the bridge ways, past Zerar Dry Dock, and talked about all sorts of aspects of why the river is so important to not only Cape Girardeau, but the whole area, with navigation, with transportation, with commercial fishing, and, and the Zerar Department of Conservation is really on the ball when it comes to what they do on the river, and why they do it. Looking at constantly maintaining what's, what's in the river, and the cleanliness of the river, with various sensors they use up and down the river, even on barges and boats, they use those sensors now to take readings, all up and down the river. The one thing that, that we got to talking about was the Asian carp. We got up into June Creek, and we kind of got out of the way of a barge coming down the river, and just to avoid the waves from the barge, and he gets in there and does a few little circles, and next thing you know, the Asian carp are jumping everywhere, and people are kind of ducking. But we got talking about them, and I have, now you think of the word carp, and you think that's not really reliable. I've eaten carp the way the ils are before, and it's not really it. But these are, and in Japan, they're considered a delicacy. They are, it's just a clean white fish, very, very tasty, just, I kind of like it, like halibut, and it's hard to believe, the halibut's a great fish, it's a lot better than the tilapia, or some farm-raised fish. But in any event, they, they would like to see more local restaurants serving fish that's caught locally in the river, and put it on the menu. At the same time, we're, we're going up and down the river, seems like we're constantly seeing these huge pleasure boats, that are all moving south, and I don't know whether they're just moving, they're moving south because of the winter, but some of them are loopers, which they loop from, from, let's see, Mobile, they go all the way up to East Coast, and the Saint Paul, all the way, come into the Great Lakes, come down the Mississippi, and it takes them a year or two sometimes, depending on how they do it. But, in the winter, they all head south somewhere, and there were like eight or nine of these boats that passed us in this three hours, and I kept thinking, you know, we had a, some kind of a document or warrant or something, where they could stop here, get out and have lunch, and it would be a neat deal, it would really help our charity. And I'm sure most of them went down and stopped at Kids Gas Stop, because it's one of the only ones around, and I'm sure that they're always glad to see them, but I got to thinking about that, and I got to thinking about the MRCTI meeting, the talk of more and more river cruises that are occurring, there are three companies on the river starting 2020 that are doing cruises up and down the river, utilizing a lot of these low-slung river cruise boats now, still very big riverboat-type boats. And it would also give us an opportunity to have more documents for them here, so it's, it's something that we might want to consider as part of our long-range downtown plan, to get something like that done. I know it's not easy, when the river goes up 40, 45 feet in variation, but it can be done, and it might be something to look at long-term. Anyways, good trip. First Friday coffee this week, MoDOT gave a great update on transportation projects in the local area, specifically about the Center Junction DDI project. He hung around afterwards to answer any questions or concerns people had. Tomorrow, we have a joint meeting with the school board, 11 o'clock, go State Center, to review the aquatic committee presentation, to talk about what the two stans can do together to address programming, to address operational costs, all those things that need to come together to make this a reality, so that's the beginning of a neat discussion. You already mentioned spaghetti day. Tuesday, the 12th, next week, is the MMLO Regional Meeting in Scott Cities, some of you signed up for that. And Friday, the 15th, is a Zonta Club Women of Achievement Lunch, which is a big deal every year, and Chamber of Commerce Annual banquet's the 21st. So a lot of things to do that this month, before Thanksgiving, so that's about it. Scott?
Stay busy. Just had a couple items, one of them, Staff is at ICMA, myself, Molly, and Victor were there. While Victor was there, he became a credential manager, I don't know if that was a coincidence, it was the same time or, or not, but he got his credentials as a city manager, and that's an accomplishment, we want to recognize. Congratulations, Victor. Molly had her first meeting with, as a vice president for ICMA, and I got to do a lot of, of great classes out there, a lot of great speakers, I went to a couple classes on the university, the town gal relationship, and there's some interesting things out there about that, and there's actually a association, and may look at, try and see if we can become a part of. They have ideas of how, how faculty and cities can work together with students in order to accomplish things within the city, opportunity zones, and the housing, I went to a great session on that, a lot about civil discourse, and how it just continues to be a difficult thing to people to just disagree, and, and do it right. I'm fortunate that here, people can and do disagree, and we work out, and we, and we come to a better solution. So we're blessed in that, in that role. I went to a design workshop first in there, and got some ideas on how to work, to use design workshops to improve processes, so I'll be able to use those skills in that way. So, we're passing those things along to you. And then, I know a couple meetings ago, we had a discussion on Tobacco 21, and just provided some information. Chief Blair is a top of some of the cities that have this, and how they go about doing their checks, and they basically do theirs on a complaint basis, they just don't have time to do every single place it sells it on a regular basis, so that's kind of how we would proceed with that. And then Eric had some concerns about some of the ways the ordinance was, the ordinance was written, and so he has some concerns about that regarding fees, we're going to advise the state as to how, how much we can do fines, so there's a lot of those things that would have to be adjusted, that we have to adjust to our existing tobacco ordinance. So, there would be more work to do, and I wanted to ask council if, because I also had some input from council members, and others, that perhaps this is more of a state issue, that if you just, if you just go here, then people are just going to go to the county here, or Jackson.
That was my thing, so I got you all, but I, with, with it being difficult, I mean, I feel like sometimes, passing an ordinance that you, that's difficult to, or impossible to police, is not, it's not a good policy to have an ordinance that you can enforce. And I, and I think if you really look at some of the stuff that, unfortunately, that we've got, out of the hundreds of ordinances we've got, we can't police all the ones that we've got, the way we should. And I really feel that this is a state issue, to me, that's just my opinion, I, I think that once they would, the state could pass it down to the county, and, and then to us, I think that, that's, to me, that better sets, sets better with me. You know, I, I look at a lot of the laws and different things that we put into place, it's to, to protect people from evil, but this one kind of feels like we're trying to protect people from themselves, adults. So I, I'll just be with that, but I really think this is a state issue. And I commend Eli, I think that it's amazing that he's, that he's done everything and put the work in. I just think this is a state issue, and it's easy to go further.
Well, the other issue that is out there... Well, the other issue that is out there is that no matter what you do as a city with an ordinance, they can still buy this stuff online and there's no control of that. The city can't control what people buy online. The state can somewhat more than we can, with a state law, but that's not going to prevent that at all. And that's, you know, if you outlaw it to people under eighteen, they can just get it on online. And that's not changing a thing. That's not, I think we can do a lot more with education, we can do a lot more with, you know, maybe just limiting the amount of nicotine that's in that somehow, because that's the addictive component of it. But Eric made some good points that in the proposed ordinance that we've looked at with others, sometimes the penalty amounts are in excess of what's permitted by Missouri law. It's, the presence of retail dealers and tobacco dealers confusing, it can be inconsistent and you're, you're limiting to what a, a so-called vape shop can do, you get the convenience stores, you just walk in and it's there. There are just so many inconsistencies in the way it is right now and the enforcement would really be tough. So I'm not sure it's something that at this point, until the state gets involved with it, until we can do something about online sale, it's something that we want staff to spend a lot of time on researching and spending time on.
I don't think we need to throw our hands up to say this is a state issue. I, I think this is definitely something that we've got to wade into the water of this kind of a discussion. If, if we've hunted things like this to the state, I mean, it can take years and who knows what kind of technology will progress or how much more insidious the marketing gets and how much more this works its way into, into middle school and high school. I'd like to see the city who can't take a stand, I'd like to see us proceed with this because it, it's an issue. This is a pervasive thing. And I know it's difficult to, you know, to police and everything, but other communities have done the same. And so anything, sometimes things are difficult and we can still proceed with them.
I still think, then it comes to, then what we want to do, the discussion is, is that do we want to go down the road of, of doing it or not? I am to the fact that this is, we are talking about adults and unless they want to change the, the definition of an adult at the state level and federal level, then, then let's talk. But we're talking about imposing rules and regulations on adults. They're eighteen years old. Change the law, change that law and then let's attract this. That's, that's, that's over governance. That's just over governance.
Well, I mean, but by that logic, anything that, for any type of rule or anything that you put in place would be over governance. I mean, we've got to look at the health and the futures of these kids and we've got to make sure that we're, we're thinking about this from a community standpoint. I, I know it's tough, I know it's not popular, but.